I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 16th, meeting of the Sancho County Board of Commissioners. The order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is opening and reading of bids. I'll note there are none. Moving on to reports and requests. Board of Commissioners, first item is the Accounts Payable docket. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we get to do some of the things that we enjoy the most here in government, is that's recognized both our employees and our citizens who are doing great things for our community. So first off, we have Employees of the Month. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Dieter.
I would ask Mr. Corporal to come to the podium. And he will introduce and then give a long synopsis, if you would like, of their outstanding careers for St. Joe County.
Thank you very much. I'm Jim Corporal. I'm the Chief Public Defender for St. Joseph County. My office address is 704 West Washington Street, South Bend. Two Employees of the Month, that's pretty good for a department. Unfortunately, these are two people who retired. The first one I want to recognize is Mr. Donald Berger. Don, if you'd stand up. Don put in over 20 years of service to the Public Defender's Department as a felony level six deputy. For Don, I would use the term, the baseball term grinder, because Don was a grinder. Don got more cases than anybody else. He always had case loads that were at or near the limitations, and he worked his cases in an extremely proficient manner. And we're sorry to see him go at this point in time. The second individual for Employee of the Month is Phil Skidinski. Now Phil worked for the Public Defender's Department for over 30 years as a felony deputy. I would describe Phil as one of the most pleasant, genteel, and polite human beings I have ever met. I never have heard him say a cross word about anybody, and I don't believe anybody has ever said a cross word about him. He was a tough trial lawyer. He tried two death penalty cases to completion, and the office is going to miss him. So those are the two Employees of the Month.
All right, thank you, sir.
It worked, yes.
Before we present you with your lovely gifts and a signed paperwork here, like any other Commissioner like to give their opinions of our esteemed winners.
I think this is a good example for young Mr. Mish here. If you work hard and serve the people well, maybe you might get an award someday after your years of service.
Yeah, your sign. Do you want to say something?
No, I just think it's wonderful that we're able to support these people and honor them. So thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it so much.
And I'd like to thank both gentlemen, who I have known, and during my 39 years on the South Bend Police Department, Mr. Mish went against them in court and so on, but the job that the Public Defender's Office does is very good for St. Joe County. Most of the time, it's dealing with people who cannot afford to have legal representation. So thanks to St. Joe County, but more importantly, thanks to the attorneys who put a lot of time and effort. It's a very, for the most part, a job that people don't want to do, but these men and women have stepped up to defend the people in our community that need it. And again, appreciate all the work you all have done.
Yes.
So come on up here, and we will present you with your certificates and these phenomenal partying gifts that we have.
I'm just gonna, I don't want to get a recording of me falling down the steps, so I'm just gonna stick up here. I'll try to keep it that way. It won't be too much. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate. All right, moving on to Business of the Month for June. I don't believe they are here. I don't know.
They are not here right now.
Okay, so you will hold that. I also don't think anyone from Factory Tile is here that I see, so we can hold that as well. So it moves us to Citizen of the Month for May.
May of this year?
May of this year, yes. So we're in good shape. And it is my pleasure, Deanna, Coach Gump, why don't you come up to the microphone there, so you can be even more uncomfortable than you would normally be. So it's my pleasure to award the May Citizen of the Month Award to Deanna Gump. She's been the head coach of the Notre Dame softball team for over 20 years, and not only is she the winningest softball coach in program history, but her 783 wins are the second most of any Notre Dame coach in the history, trailing only Muffet McGraw. Under Coach Gump, the Irish have made 21 consecutive NCAA tournament appearances, in addition to four conference tournament titles. She has clearly taken her place as one of the best coaches in the country. The only place Deanna has excelled more than the diamond, though, is in our community. Her annual strikeout cancer events have raised more than a half a million dollars for local pediatric cancer patients and their families. With all that money staying here in our community to help folks get through one of the worst periods of their lives, and Coach knows that as well as anyone. Fundrais have helped build a game room in the Beacon Children's Hospital, buy Christmas presents for families each year, and many other wonderful things. But I would say the best thing that Coach has ever done is raise her two amazing children, Brady and Tatum, and without a doubt, the most challenging thing she's ever done is raise her husband, John. St. Joe County is very lucky to have Deanna Gump in our community, and we thank you so much for what you do for all of us.
Thank you.
Give her a round of applause. Would either Commissioner care to add some comments?
Anything, Deb?
No, I just think it's wonderful that women do great things in sports. Yay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I would also like to echo President Costelli's short synopsis of that, but just on a personal level, knowing you and your family on a social aspect is awesome, fantastic people, but more, I don't think the general public understands that you never have a day off in coaching. You're always recruiting, looking, helping the kids in your school, in your program, and then traveling the country, finding other upstanding citizens who will end up playing softball for you. Again, being in that a little bit, I know the effort. You never have a day off. It's kind of like, well, not kind of like, but to that extent, working very hard. So again, appreciate all you're doing, all you're doing for your team, but as Andy said, more importantly, everything you've done for the community.
Any comments you'd like to make, Coach?
Well, first of all, thank you. You know, and it's funny, because when we first started doing our strikeout cancer and raising money for kids with cancer, it happened because we were given such a great community when my daughter was fighting cancer. And when that, you know, that changes your life. Many of you know who have dealt with cancer, that it changes everything that you do in your life. And when that happened to us in 2010, it was amazing how many people came together for us who didn't know us. Like, they didn't know, they just knew, they heard about it, or, you know, from somewhere. But so many people came together and helped us when we needed it the most. And so since 2010, that's really stuck with my family and my teams, and we're thrilled to be able to help kids who are fighting cancer. We're thrilled to help families, and all we want to do is just keep, keep that going, because any little thing you can do to help someone who's struggling, whether they know where it's from, it doesn't matter. It's just, if you can put a smile on those kids' faces, or, you know, just give something, or time, or anything you can do, it makes a huge difference. So thank you for that, but it's something that I love, I'm proud of, and I'm gonna keep doing. So regardless of what happens on the field.
Awesome. Well, come on up, Coach. We can get a picture.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'm fairly certain our Citizen and Youth of the Month, I know, are both in school right now, so we'll try to figure out a time to get, to make those awards as well. So next up, we have a Key to the County presentation. Commissioner Dieter.
Mr. Corporal?
Yes.
Wearing you out today, man.
Wearing me out. Key to the county. This is being given to Anthony Luber, who retired from the Public Defender's Office a little over a month ago.
So Jim, should we be concerned that so many people are, you know, leaving your service, or?
Mr. Dalton, are you aware of that for the budget?
Yeah, talked about younger people. We're getting a lot younger, that's for sure. Over 40 years of service to the Public Defender's Office. Tony is the second longest-serving public defender in the history of the department. Over the years, Tony was always the legal scholar of the Public Defender Department. You could go to Tony for answers involving any tough legal question. He always kept up on case law, on statutes. Questions regarding evidence and procedure, Tony always knew the answer. He tried a lot of cases in this county, represented a lot of different people in a lot of different situations, but always gave him, gave them his all. He is also the 2007 Gideon Award winner, which is a statewide award for the most outstanding public defender in the state of Indiana, and he is the only winner that St. Joseph County has ever had. So with that, Tony Luber.
Why don't you come up to the microphone, Tony? Commissioner Dieter, any comments?
We'll wait till after his opening statement.
Excellent.
Gee, thanks. I'm getting kind of a big head about all this, because what I've tried to do is to do the things I ought to do. And if I do get too big-headed, my wife, who couldn't be with us because she has some difficulties getting around and everything else, she'll put me in my place and kind of puncture that big balloon that's in there. But I've enjoyed a life here in St. Joseph County. I came here in 1964, the same year that Eric Prossiedin arrived. He had a lot more to do with the community than I did. But I've had an opportunity to meet and, and serve in this county for all kinds of things. I spent eight years on the South Bend School Board. I spent 24 years on the Library Board. I taught at IUSB for more than 30 years as an adjunct, teaching criminal law and procedure and evidence, which is why Mr. Corporal might say I knew some answers, because I was in school all the time. I've come to appreciate this community, and I'm amazed by the people in the community in all aspects of it, and how they make this a good place to live. My wife and I raised our five children here in this community, and we love it here. So I want to say thanks for this honor, recognition.
Thank you, Tony. Any Commissioners have any comments?
Good, Deb?
Oh, just congratulations on all you've done, and appreciate the fact that you love living here. Yay, good.
And I'm gonna stay here in my retirement.
Commissioner Dieter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Tony, for a generation, if not more, of helping people in the community, and the thousands of people that you've represented over the years of court. I was in court with you several times, from the 70s on on upon. And then it's also interesting, the dude that beeps the horn and yells at you when you're walking back to your office on water, that's me. So again, on behalf of everybody in the Commissioner's Office and everybody in St. Joe County, thank you for the great job that you've done over the years. It's well appreciated.
I'd like to add, I had the pleasure of working with Tony in a couple different iterations a few years ago, and he's truly a diligent public servant to help make our community a better place. And also, from a, as a Key to the County, this is the highest award we can give any individual. So we, it is not done lightly, and we applaud your lifetime of service. And then sometimes there's a rent payment that comes with the key, but we'll, we'll talk about that later. If you want to come on up, we can get a picture, and one more round of applause. Come on over here. All right. Moving on, the next item is public hearing regarding disposition of county property. Guess the first step, Counselor, is I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Correct.
Does that motion exist?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Our public hearing is open. Mr. Shalio, if you wouldn't mind bringing us up to date on what this transaction is?
Certainly. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, offices as part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning Growth, offices on 7th and 11th floor. The actions before you, the next several actions before you today, relate to a piece of property, actually two pieces of property, at 56275 Snowberry Road in the New Carlisle area. These properties were acquired for a road construction project that since has, has moved directions. We will improve Larison Drive instead of building a new corridor, north to south corridor, through the area. The land is presently used for agricultural purposes. My understanding is, it will be used for agricultural purposes in the, once it's sold and transferred. We have gone through a process to appraise the property. The average appraised value is $141,300. We met last Tuesday night, and County Council approved a resolution to approve the disposition of this property. Any property over $50,000, appraised value of $50,000 has to have Council approval for disposition. So we are now seeking the ability to move forward on the disposition of this property as part of a larger transaction. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board?
Negative.
All right, what's the next step, Counselor?
Any other questions or comments from the public?
Now, open up the floor for public comment. Hearing none. I close public comment portion?
And then a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. That moves us to Resolution R14C2022, Approval of Disposal of County Property.
Based on the last action that you took, this then, this resolution would allow for the disposition of this property. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the approval of the disposal of the county property.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on, Resolution R15C2022, Approval of Property Purchase Agreement.
So this resolution relates to the actions, the last two actions that have been taken as part of the purchase of a piece of property at the northwest corner of Early Road and Walnut Road. This property is, is part of that purchase agreement, to purchase that property. This purchase property, or this property is, is factored into the equation for the purchase. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board?
Negative.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve the property purchase agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to bills passed by the Sancho County Council. Thank you, Bill. At a public hearing held on August 9th, 2022, council took the following action. Bill 10522 became ordinance 9922, Salary Amendment for Ducom Center. Bill 10922, Ordinance 10022, Salary Amendment for the Health Department. Bill 10722, Ordinance 10122, The Monthly Transfer and Appropriations. Bill 11022, Ordinance 10222, American Rescue Plan Transfer for the Health Department. Bill 1122, Ordinance 10322, ARP Transfer for Portage Manor. Bill 10222, Ordinance 10422, Amendment to the Health Department Fee Structure. And finally, Bill 10322, Ordinance 10622, An Ordnance Changing, Initiating Parcel Divisions by Public Utilities for Area Plan. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these ordinances.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion's pass. All right, next, we have appointments, appointment to the Airport Authority Board. I will now open up nominations.
I would like to nominate Andy Costelli.
I'll second that, yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I will close nominations. I'll take it away.
Yeah, we first of all like to thank Jay Asdel, who served on the Airport Authority for a significant amount of time. He recently resigned, and that leaves a Republican appointment open for the Commissioners to make, which we are excited that the board is going to take the action to appoint Mr. Costelli, now that he's stepping down from the Board of Commissioners, and will continue to serve the county in a different role.
Isn't there, don't you have to be 70 and above?
Well, I am not 70 or above, and I also sit on the authorities.
Good to go, good to go.
And also, this appointment will become effective September 1st as well.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Any chance to work with Mitch again? I can't, I can't pass it up.
Yeah, but it's Mitch Heppenheimer, too, so.
Next, we have appointments to the Economic Development Commission. So I will open nominations, and I think there's, the process is City of South Bend, the, I'm sorry, South Bend Council, County Council, and the Board of Commissioners all make a recommended, recommend appointments for the Board of Commissioners. The South Bend Council recommended Becky Bonham, who currently serves in that capacity. The County, our County Council recommends Terry Bush, and then our recommendation is Martin Wright, who also currently serves in that capacity. So those are the three nominations that we have. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Close nominations.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Are we voting for one, or all three?
All three at once.
Sure. Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Well, yeah, I approve for all of them. Yes, please.
That's an aye.
Yep. And Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Next, we have Approval of an Employment Contract, Deputy EMA Director.
Well, I thought Mr. Agostino was on, but I can speak on this one. The EMA Department has been slightly revamped.
Emergency Management Association.
Emergency Management Association. Buddy Kurtzus is now our EMA Director. He was appointed two weeks ago.
Interim, or interim.
Interim, yes. We still have to go through the formal process. And Mr. Lopez has agreed to join Buddy. If Mr. Lopez wants to stand up, wave to everybody. All right. The EMA Department has been modified in how it's being handled now, and Buddy and Jim will be taking over. And this contract is to ensure that Mr. Lopez's contract is appropriately documented. I've taken a look at it. Pete wrote it, and it's been reviewed by me, so of course it's okay. And we would like the Commissioners' consideration and approval.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure, comments. We are extremely lucky, the county, to have two outstanding people who basically devoted their entire lives to public service, even though it came through the fire department, which is still okay in my book. But these guys know this job inside and out, and for us to get a caliber of, of people to, to get EMA where we should be in, in this state and in the Midwest is, it's a good get, other than the Notre Dame shirt, so I will get you a roll tide as we speak.
I think that's in the employment agreement, that that is not allowable. I also want to thank Commissioner Dieter and his work in helping stabilize EMA and moving that forward. It's the first chance I've got to see you in person now. It's just, it's, we're very fortunate in Sancho County to have Buddy, and then to have Jim kind of taking leadership here, as they've done in every place they've been. So we're, we're very well-served here in St. Joseph County. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve that James Lopez will be hired.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Right, next, we have Letter, Letter of Agreement for Professional Services with DLZ Feasibility Study for Juvenile Housing Detention.
This is an agreement that we've worked on for quite a while now. The county engaged a auditor to come in, take a look, and ensure that we are handling things in the best way appropriate with housing juveniles. One of the recommendations was taking a look at either new space or modifying space to house certain types of offenders, and that's what this agreement is, is to have DLZ take a look at the best way to handle these situations. So having taken a look at the letter agreement, I would ask for the county's consideration and approval.
I have two comments as well. Number one is, I will now be voting on this, because I will be going to work for DLZ in a few weeks. The second one is, I'm very grateful that we're, this has been a longstanding issue that we've had in St. Joe County, so that we're finally taking the steps to address this. Because it doesn't happen very often, but when it does, it's, it's something that needs to be resolved. So any other questions or comments or questions from the board?
Sure. I think it's a very good road to go down, that Mr. Mish and others are looking. I think Troy is part of the process to look at that. So to see what the best bet, if there is room currently at the county jail, if we need to add on to there or somewhere else, so by hiring a company to go out and give us the exact information that we need before. Comes back to us to make a decision, which is always monetary, along with the council, so it's a good, good avenue to go down. And I have no further questions at this time.
There are no more questions or comments. Is there a motion?
There is a motion to There is a motion to agree the professional services with DLZ.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni is abstaining.
Moving on, Request for Proposal, San Joseph County Mowing Services. Mr. Frank.
Good morning. Frank Fotia, Constituent Services Manager for the Board of Commissioners, offices on the 7th floor of this building. Before you is a request to advertise for proposals for mowing services. We'd like to advertise this week, next week, have a pre-proposal meeting on Thursday, September 1st, with proposal submissions due Tuesday, September 13th.
Thank you, Frank. I think I applaud these efforts. One of the challenges we have in public works is just lack of personnel. So anything we can do to help deliver services better to our constituents, something we should at least look at. Once again, this does not bind us in any way to do this, but I think it makes sense for us to look and see if this could be an improvement on our delivery of services. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Sure. Again, it's, before I was here and a couple of years ago, the, the county highway took a, a big hit of employees, and they haven't been able to get up to where we need to. So this helps facilitate and helps our guys pick up where we can't, just through the amount of people we have, equipment, stuff to get out there. So again, it's, we're not taking this out of the hands of the Highway Department. We're just going to assist if this deems the study once we look at that, because we have hundreds of miles. We have right-ofways. We've got all kinds of stuff that we have to do. So I think this is a good job just to check. I think Mr. Carlson did a very good job with Sky of looking at the maps, and I don't know if you have the data of how many extra things that we all have to, to do. So this is a good start to looking of future of our Highway Department.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the advertisement for the San Joseph County Mowing Services.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Next, move on to Archives, Approval of Update to Arrow's Pest Control Contract. Good morning.
Good morning. Katrina Carter, San Joseph County City of South Bend Archives and Record Center, 1140 South Lafayette, South Bend. This is to add the building that you guys bought at the end of the yacht last year to the Arrow contract for pest control and rodent control.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Arrow's Pest Control Contract.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next, move on to the Health Department. We've got a couple of grants. First is, they want to apply a grant through the National Association of County and City Health Officials to participate in their Health Equity and Overdose Prevention Mentorship Program.
Hi, good morning. Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the County City Building. And we are requesting support to apply to Nacho for a Health Equity and Overdose Prevention Mentorship Program, where we can learn from peers, share experiences, and exchange strategies for integrating health equity into drug overdose prevention and response work. The total amount of the grant is $20,000, and all of it would be used to have, be salary recovery for current Department of Health staff that would be working on this initiative.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this grant application.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Next, Approval to Apply for a Grant Through the CDC to Become a Public Health Associate Program Host Site.
Yes, Amy Rupe, we are requesting support to apply to the CDC for a public health intern who would join us for two years beginning this October. They would be 100% funded by the CDC, as this grant does not have an amount with it. They would be assigning an intern to us. And the primary responsibility of the intern would be to develop and implement a strategic plan that aims to prevent and control selected cancers in San Joseph County.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this grant application.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Amy. Next, Infrastructure Planning and Growth. First item is the Consent Agenda. I will note there is an irrevocable letter of credit in Vernice Woods Subdivision, a subdivision bond, Mayflower Estates at Lightner Farms, and a special event to St. Pius, the 10th Catholic Church Sixth Annual Fly-In Lion 5K. Questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have South Bend Regional Chamber Economic Development Service Agreement. Mr. Bill.
Good morning, Bill Schalio again. So earlier, or late last year, we approved a contract with the South Bend Regional Chamber for Economic Development Services. That contract was for years 22, 23, and 24. Just as a way to balance budgets and, and better set contracts for some of our consulting firms, we wanted to extend this contract, but also get the contract in line with the municipal rate that the Chamber charges some of the other partners. So what we'd like to do is, is keep the rate of 105,000 for year 2022, 23, and 24. Grow the rate to 120,000 for 2025, 26, and then 125,000 for years 27 and 28. This cost is in line with the services that we're receiving at this point in time from the Chamber. We feel that this is a good way to, to not only build the Chamber as a partner, but also support their efforts. As we look at staffing for our office or our division, this is, this is a very reasonable cost for what an employee, an extra FTE would cost for our group. So we think this is a reasonable expense in addition to the, the services provided. So we would ask for your favorable approval.
Questions or comments from the board?
Yes. Was this brought up to the council during the budget?
No, this is a, this is a fee payment specifically done through the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Commission approved this at their last meeting last week.
Okay, so why are we taking this leap now?
So we're doing this now, just as, as the Chamber is, is preparing for a fundraising campaign for their Economic Development Services and some of their other services. This gives them some certainty on our funding position over the next several years.
And do they need this done right away?
They've asked that we do this as, as part of a commitment as they start working through, there, as they're working through all their partners that they work with, they're asking us to, to update our contract, so yes. They've, they've asked that it be done, so that's why we're bringing it today.
They need it done today, or, because the way, what I'm looking at, because it's going to be extended through this year, nothing against. Andy, Mr. Baxmire will be coming in, and I'd like him to weigh in, in on this. Is that, if this is delayed a month, would that be an issue?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could delay it two weeks. I don't think that's, or whatever the next contract period, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, once he gets in, because he's got a, a ton of stuff that he's going to have to immerse. But since this extends through his, hopefully his term going on, I think it would, to table it, so he can, he can weigh in on that once we get going, if that's.
We'll work, we'll work with Karen to put this back on the agenda.
Pardon me?
Why would you want to table this? Because I think it's always great that we're moving forward with the economic growth. I think South Bend Regional Chamber and Jeff Ray is doing the best thing to help us upgrade our economy. So I think it's good. I, I mean, oh gosh, I certainly always cared and appreciated Jeff Ray.
Okay, cool. I'll make a motion to table.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. And I guess, and my reason being is this. So I'm, was one of the folks who was pushing to make this happen, because I think it's appropriate. The, the value we get from the, the Chamber of Commerce is immense, much more than what our financial compensation to them is. But that said, this will, this contract will extend past my service, so to let, and we're doing this with a couple of other items as well, that we're, we're letting the, the new commissioner come in and, and kind of impact the things that will be, he will be responsible for. But make no mistake, my tabling this does not do anything other than, I cannot recommend this strongly enough. I mean, in the last year alone, the work product that we've gotten out of the Chamber of Commerce as it relates to economic development, we simply do not have the capacity to hire that ourselves, even if we wanted to. It would cost us four times what, what our contribution to them is to make this happen. So I'm tabling this, but only to let Mr. Baxmire weigh in, but I could not recommend this more strongly.
Again, I agree with Andy's comments that you two guys doing all this work is immense to begin with, but what Jeff Ray and everybody else there has been able to contribute, I just want Carl to be able to weigh in on once he starts.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I still vote aye for tabling it.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, item is tabled. Next, we have Bendix Woods County Park Technology Upgrade.
So this proposal before you today is a proposal with New Era Technologies. New Era is the group that's done the tech work in this space, 7th floor, and then the, some of the other rooms around the building. This is a proposal to provide additional technology services to the West Wing space at the Nature Center at Bendix Woods County Park. We've tried to use that room for a, a number of site selector visits and other project meetings. And while the, the screen on the wall's good, the, the tech as it relates to the microphones and, and the audio is, is a challenged, challenged at best. So the proposal before you today will upgrade the technology in that space. It won't be used just for us. It'll be used for parks, for other visitors, for other events, things like that. So what we're asking for you to do is approve this contract amount in the amount of $8,585. The Redevelopment Commission previously approved this agreement in their meeting on August 9th. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board?
I think is our IT, is Mr. Warfield involved in helping out what they all need to?
Yeah, so he's, he's been involved in this conversation, so.
Yeah, it's a good thing if, for those who haven't been out there, Mr. Lopez, to Bendix Woods Park and spend some time out there. Besides the park itself, but all the, the people, which is short-staffed out there to begin with. So this is a, a good step up to start with.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, I just want to say that I think it's good that we're technology upgrading things there, because a lot of people like to go, and I've always enjoyed going there, too. So, good.
Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion for technology upgrade at Bendix Woods County Park.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next up, Court Award, Disposal of Brush Piles at Highway Garages. Good morning.
My name's Michael Beeks. I'm, I'm a highway engineer. I work for IPG, replacing Sky Metters, who's traveling with his family today. This is, we took competitive quotes to ask five companies to, to take some large brush piles and mill them up and take them away. These were mostly, were gotten in a big storm in January a few years ago. And so it's just a cleanup operation. Three of them answered, and this is the low quota. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
Would this, is this at all of our highway garages?
It is all the highway garages that have brush piles, yes.
Which is all of them?
No, there's just three of them.
Granger?
Granger, Riverside, and Carlyle.
Okay. And will they be milling on-site, or will they transport and mill it somewhere else?
That's their choice. I would believe with this company, they're going to mill on-site. They have a very large.
Yeah, Granger's a mess.
What's that?
Granger is a mess.
And, and it'll be taken care of, yes.
Okay, so I think if they are going to mill there, we should let, before it starts, let the public know, because we've had a lot of issues with that garage, and we just want that community to know that we're doing something that's positive.
I know Sky Metters has been meeting with them, and I've been coordinating dates with them, so they know.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the disposal of the tree and bush piles at the highway garages.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Thank you, Mike. All right, next, we have Grant of Permanent Easements. The first one is for 540077, Terrence Lane, South Bend, Easement Number 69.
These, all three grant, are granting easements to expedite the Douglas work, the Douglas Road Improvement Work. These are property that the county owns, that was bought as part of the right-ofway, and that the power company would like to use for the relocation of their transmission lines.
So I can also include 540077, Terrence Lane, Easement Number 71, and 54007 Maple Lane, Easement 67. These are all the three parcels that are being discussed. Counselor, I assume we take these individually for individual action?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Did we ever, or we, was there ever a resolution on the person who had the property at the southeast corner of Douglas there, in Ironwood?
Commissioner, I don't know that answer. Maybe Sky's here. I don't know. He's, he's in a place where he can talk at us.
Sky should be on his car en route to Bowling Green as we speak. You there, Sky?
Yes, can you hear me?
Where are you? You on the toll road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pull over here. Sky Metters, County Engineer, Department Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor, currently offices on the Indiana Toll Road. That, that, that property, I believe, is a Buchanan property. And we, I have been working with Phil Garrett and Mike Mish to get that resolved, and I think we're close to a resolution there.
Okay, yeah, that's, I knew that that was an issue, so. All right, drive safe, go Falcons.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Have a good day.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there, well, so I guess we'll, first one is the Easement Number 69. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this.
I'm seconding that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye with this.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, Easement 71. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. And finally, the Maple Lane, Easement Number 67. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion's passed. Thank you. Next, we move on to Old Business. Approval of Energy-Efficient Deduction Form, the County Jail.
We need a motion to take it off the table?
Does that motion exist?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
I believe Joe is on the phone.
Joe Zorzinski, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. 2211 East Jefferson Boulevard, DLZ. And the Energy Efficient Act Congress passed for both deduction, and there's another one that's an R and D. It's a tax credit. And these were established back in about 2005 and in the 90s for design and construction of energy-efficient buildings. And just recently, we've been approached by our, by our consultant, who does our taxes in the last couple of years. And since federal, state, and local governments don't pay federal taxes, there are tax credits and tax deductions that are a possibility for projects that we do. And we recently did this jail project with the CARES Act money, and it had LED lighting and temperature and controls efficiencies. And the way this works is we need to get permission from the government agency that we work for that a more detailed study does go into effect, where this tax consultant sends out, professional engineers looks at the drawings, walks the site, and then comes up with the actual credit that could be applied to DLZ's taxes if the government agency does allow that to happen. And agencies that have allowed that, the United States Postal Service on multiple projects that we do for them, as well as like Franklin County, Ohio Jail, and the Vigo County, Indiana Jail, had, they were new jails that had energy efficiencies in them, and they allowed that. had... They were new jails that had energy efficiencies in them, and they allowed that credit. And then there are state colleges like Lake Michigan College and Columbia State College in Ohio, as well as other, you know, communities that allow this study to be done. And then there's a... This is a deduction, so it comes off, and then there's the federal taxes applied to this credit that DLZ would get. So that's kind of the explanation. My understanding is this Alliant Group that we hired had called the warden and explained the process, and this is the forms that you have in front of you to approve a further study and then allowing DLZ to take a tax deduction of whatever amount they come up with on this project. Any questions?
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Energy Efficient Deduction Form for the county jail.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni will be abstaining.
Thank you. All right. It moves us to the public comments portion of our meeting. We'll first open it up to friends that are in the room. Any public comments?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? Deborah Doral, 21677, Arton Road, South Bend. I am here to thank you once again for your work this morning and throughout. On my way here, I drive along the river, and I am so blessed to be able to do that. And on a beautiful day like today, the bike trail and the parks are just full of people outdoors enjoying what the county and essentially the Creator has blessed us with in this area. And so one of the things that I contrast that with is what we are seeing in the papers and in the media about a good part of the country around us is experiencing environmental disasters and have been for many years. And so in the paper this morning, they're talking about the Northeast having a severe drought to the point where it's affecting all of their food production, because as you know, once soil dries out, it stops being soil. And it's not just the farmers that are being affected, it's everybody else with all of their yards and all of the recreation areas. And even their atmosphere starts getting more difficult to breathe when the green plants aren't doing their jobs. And so also, a couple of days ago, I saw an article about all the green jobs that are coming to Indiana. And I want to link these issues officially in this public venue, because the comprehensive plan that we are working on is key to making good decisions with the land that we are blessed with, that I think really the entire nation is starting to turn their eyes to this area. And the fact that we have a high water table, we have abundant water, we have abundant land, I think is a big responsibility that you as the policymakers and people like me as the public have to have big shoulders to make these hard decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments from friends in the room?
Seriously, Dan?
Well, I'll take it while I can. Anyone?
Come on. This is his last big meeting. Come on.
On Zoom. We'll be down here next month, or next week. We'll be... We're going to convene in here, so... Any friends? I see Mary's iPad.
Hello, my name is Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road in Carlyle, Indiana. I am surprised that the county is in the... I thought we were getting out of the real estate business with the land purchases and the transfers. And I can't help but notice the big loss in what the property was paid for when they purchased the land and then paid for the removal of the house that was only 44 years old, and the removal of the well and septic and outbuilding, and now it's being sold for much less. Does that mean our property values are going to go down and our assessments are going to go down as well? I think there's reckless spending of the county tax money, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments from folks on Zoom? Seeing and hearing no one, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Well, second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. And a reminder, we will be meeting down here next Tuesday.